Good evening.
Good evening.
The City Council for the City of Brookshire, Texas will hold a special session for a budget workshop on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. in the City Council chambers for the purpose of considering the following. Read a prayer.
Father God, we say thank you, Lord, for another day you've blessed us to see, Lord, and we ask that you come in and sit with us, Lord, and help us and give us a good understanding of what's presented to us, Lord, and help us to make the right decisions that will be pleasing to your side and for the betterment of this community. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
All right, so this is our second budget meeting. Shouldn't take too long. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Richards.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Taylor. Alderman Stamps.
Present.
Alderwoman McDavid, present. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Do we have any, I don't think we have any public comments. I checked over there. Okay, this is our second budget meeting for the City of Brookshire. Uh, y'all had, uh, we have some updates from before. Few changes from before. It shouldn't take too long. Uh, if you look at your summary sheet, the very top in your book, go to the last page when we, uh, voted on the capital projects that we decided to approve them all. The numbers, capital outlawed numbers are now added into the budget. And so if you look at that first, that third page in the green column, you'll see that, uh, the budget has now changed, proposed to twelve million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand one twenty-seven. And so that will leave us with one million thirty-seven thousand one forty-two remaining after we do all our expenses for F Y twenty-six. And this is not including what's in the bank. So we're still in, in good shape budget-wise for what we're, what we're requesting for twenty-six. Also, in this session, we would, uh, discuss the E D C budget as well. So if you go to, y'all go to page in your booklet, all the way down to page the project, capital projects page, that will be this one right here that we discussed last time, the capital projects page. So these are the capital projects that we all approved in our last session. We did something a little different. Some of these had E D C projects on them. So after we discussed the E D C budget, we decided to separate out the E D C capital projects. If you look at the second page, you'll see the E D C projects. So this is a then go to the second page, right up, right after that one. Keep going, yeah.
It's right behind us.
Keep going. You'll get to it. Keep going. Keep going.
Is this printed right out of Fund View?
Yes, this is right out of Fund, there it is, there it is, right there. After you go to all of the budget, you get to the, this is the page where we decided on the city side, the capital projects that will be done, right? So those numbers did not change. However, if you look at the very next page, you will see the E D C projects. E D C projects. Okay, we'll pause the meeting for a second. Four. Go to your page, uh.
That's the second to last page. See why I want to get the proposal page in the back of the It's right before the proposal. You start seeing the invoice?
Mm-hmm.
Come on.
That's the time we started back.
Up, back, the, oh, all right here.
All right. Okay, apologize for the brief interruption. Uh, Ms. Taylor has joined the meeting. So in this budget, the changes, of course, is E D C and also Public Works. If you go to the public, the very next page, you will see the Public Works Equipment Requests. Starting with the first item, uh, they're requesting, uh, a trade-in on this particular tractor. It's an Odom Auto, a newer tractor that has a lot of maintenance problems that, uh, they would like to trade in. But we need to go and look at the hours on this tractor and review some of the maintenance history. So right now, we're recommending that we kind of pause on this one. Uh, the request was for forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. The next item you'll see on it is a brush mower. Public Works. Price is twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixteen cent. Recommendation to approve that. This will allow them to continue to keep the grass cut in the city. Uh, the next item is a, uh, grapple rake. Uh, request is for seven thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cent. Grapple rake attachment to the tractor for cleaning debris. Uh, the next item is a air compressor. The currently one that we have has reached its useful life, and so it's requested replace it. Price is three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. It's a larger compressor with more capacity. The next item is equipment for car lift. Currently, there's no car lift in the Public Work Bill, Public Works Building, having to use floor jacks. So it is, that's an unsafe thing to do. So we're asking, uh, ten thousand eighty, eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. Next item is equipment jack lift. Request five thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy cent to, uh, lift equipment. And the last item is a angle boom. And the request is eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cent hydraulic angle boom to sweep the streets for debris. Debris sweeping. Now, if you look on the next page, you'll see pictures and justification for all this equipment. There's the mower, picture of the mower, uh, quotes and everything for the, uh, grapper that goes on the, uh, on the backhoe. And also the car lift, all the pictures and all the justifications right behind that. So total price for Public Works request is ninety-four thousand three hundred, three hundred and three thousand sixty-nine dollars for Public Works equipment. We have to get them, get the employees and all of them, the equipments, they need to get the job done. So I, I think this is a good request. Do we have any discussion on this particular item, on these items here? Okay. All right. We'll move along to the E D C budget. As I mentioned, there's only a couple of changes from last week. Uh, Mr. Batista, Dr. Batista will come up and give us a, uh, overview of the E D C budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Good evening, staff. Just wanted to share with you all the, this upcoming year's proposal
for the F Y twenty-six budget. As you'll note, there, um, our proposed or forecasted revenue that we received with through, um, H D L was about one point two million, uh, forecasted for this upcoming fiscal year. To the right of that is, you'll see our, our bank balance. So that's our current cash position, and so, um, that's there on the side, but you also see underneath interest earned as previous year reserve funds, and so that number essentially will, um, assist us. The number that's in the bank, you know, combining that with our projected sales tax would put us at, um, oh, a little over four million dollars to potentially, um, budget this year. So if we turn the page there, what we tried to do, uh, for this year was separate the projects with, uh, from operating expenses so that you all can identify, um, that we are, uh, we were, the funds we're using from sales tax revenue, we're going to be within, um, the amount to stay in, within budget, less than the one point two. So I want to address that first. So when you start with salaries and ending in beautification on the next page, you'll notice that our operating expenses are only, um, six, a little over six hundred thousand, including there, and our revenue, as noted in the previous page, is one point two million, so well under budget there. So we just wanted to add that, but we, what I want to make note is the, um, additional expenses under projects. So under downtown improvements, you'll see a number allocated there. For those specific projects, what we're trying to do is, um, one specific project is essentially, there's a lot of space here downtown, but it's not necessarily identified properly. Uh, individuals, we want individuals to come to the downtown and visit the downtown area, but we keep hearing about parking and spacing and whatnot. So what we want to do is line out specific spaces where people can park within the downtown area. I think we just don't have them marked out, and so those types of things and, um, and the assistance of, um, making the downtown area more inviting was the thought process behind those dollars there. And so, um, the next is equipment and computers. So we have events and whatnot, so that we may need some additional equipment when we have those business retention and expansion program events, and then computers, we may need to upgrade the computers for, uh, for the E D C department and, and technology there. Yes, special equipment there, which you see is just some additional funds, just in case we have a, a special event. And then the capital outlay facilities, uh, that number there, we, we have some dollars there specifically because we, we, we heard, heard, not heard, we identified that, um, next door to us, the E D C paid for the painting, uh, here in, in the building. So we wanted to put some dollars there just in case you all wanted to do some modifications to, to that building as well. And then moving forward, the grant matching. This hasn't been there. These last three will be added to, to the budget. These hasn't, these haven't ever been there, so what the thought process behind this was, was the city is looking to hire a grant administrator, and as the grant administrator applies and, and submits, uh, on the city's behalf for these grants, there's a grant matching amount there. So, so the city wouldn't have to come up with those funds. The E D C maybe can, uh, identify where this, um, where some of these dollars go to help the, the city out with receiving the grant, the particular grant. The next piece is, um, for the E D C board members and president to identify particular projects, so type B projects. We'll have that discussion in the next meeting of what your proposed projects, so the, the E D C board member proposed projects might look like. I left that open so we can keep it a little broad, and then you can identify your projects along throughout the year. And then I had a discussion previously, uh, with the president, and we had, we had, and the mayor and, and other individuals, and, and we wanted to add this here because I think it's important that we look at some real estate within the City of Brookshire, but also the E T J. So, uh, again, downtown parking, there are a couple of places potentially here we might be able to have some parking lots for the downtown area. In addition to that, um, that we have some, some flooding issues as well, so there may be a potential option for us to purchase land and maybe have our own detention, local detention pond. Um, in addition to that, there might be an opportunity for us to just purchase land in the E T J, um, purchase it and then annex that into the city so that it's part of the city already when developers are trying to come purchase that land. Um, the last one there are facilities, infrastructure projects. Those dollars are there, um, because the city has received a couple of grants, as you all been hearing the last couple of months with MIT mod and the ARPA roads projects. So we just want to follow that same model to move throughout various parts of the city that really need those improvements. So some of those dollars there for road and drainage as well. Infrastructure. There are any questions? I'd be happy to address them at this time.
And your total budget amount?
So total expenses is going to be, um, two point eight million. These are proposed amount, budget amount. Doesn't mean we'll expense all these funds, leaving us a, 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 if, if these, uh, funds were all expensed, we'd still have a cash position of one point two million.
Right, and, excuse me, some of that, uh, when you look at your, your binder, you see that it's red and negative. That's because in twenty-five, we did not do any projects. We didn't use any of that money that was allocated for E D C. So the negative will be compensated for the money from twenty-five and what's the revenue from twenty-six. And, but there'll still be one point some odd million dollars in the bank when this is said and done, yeah. Correct?
Yes, that is correct, but these are, again, proposed budgeted funds. We, we, we will not be expensing all those funds.
Right, right. Any questions on E D C budget?
Sir, looks good.
All right, Mr. Dr. Batista, thank you. Now, I know, uh, the books are a little confused, I think the way things are arranged, but go to the court. Our last item, we have court and we have, uh, wages. Court documents look like this, right here.
Very back. Like the second to last page, very, very back. Actually, it is the second to last page.
Second to last.
Yeah, there you go.
That's it.
I apologize, it'll be tabs in here.
We'll have tabs next time. Um, so there's three requests for the court, okay? And I have Ms., uh, Sherri Brandt will come up and explain her request.
What I'm requesting is for the judge. Normally, every city that I work for, the judge gets paid more because he has more judicial duties, like magistration. Whenever he gets called in, it could be two, three o'clock in the morning, he gets called into death situation. And every court that I work for, the judge always got paid more, so I'm asking for the judge to get paid more because of the judicial duties. And then also, um, the certification. I'm level three, so I'm the highest that I can get, but I always train my employees. I want to give them the opportunity to, to just grow and be there. So it's called C M C C, which is the Court Clerk's Municipal Court Education Center. And if they get their level one, that's one part, but it's a very thick book for, um, studying. There's three parts to every level. So level one, they do three parts, A, B, and C. And once they pass that, I'm, I'm wanting them to get a hundred dollar pay raise per month, just to, just a setup, to say, look, you're doing good, this is what you're doing. Level two is also three parts, A, B, and C. Level three, that's major. It's considered twelve books. You have to do court observation, and then you also have to do a, um, court observation survey on what you witnessed, what you did. That's very high. So I'm hoping to just get them to level one and level two right now. Level three is, it's, it's a lot, but I just want to get them to level one, level two. But I think with the pay raise for one hundred per month for level one, two hundred per month for level two, but that inspires them to keep going, keep achieving your goals. So, yes.
Incentives. Incentives.
Incentives, goals, yeah, incentives, mm-hmm.
So they're already level one, that's what you're saying?
Uh, no, they're both working on their level one. In fact, Gabriela just passed her part two today.
Oh, she passed that? I remember she was studying, okay.
Yeah, she passed part one, part two, and now all she has is level, or I should say part, like, part three, level one, yeah.
And so we are planning to do some benchmarking on this particular request to see how other municipalities and other cities handle their court and handle the training in respect to this. This would be, uh, monthly on top of any, uh, cola or merit. So we're going to do some benchmarking on this and comment on it in our next meeting.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Three, no, you have, uh, you have, you have three. You did a judge, you did, and you have a third one, I think.
Oh, the judge?
Oh, I'm sorry, you did both, okay, thank you.
Okay.
I know what the third one is. Okay, so that's the courts. One thing I want to go to is page twelve of thirteen for P D. Actually, pa- page ten of thirteen. Yeah, and your account numbers for Police Department. Page ten of thirteen. So our police department, uh, is flat right now. We don't have any new requests that's coming in. Uh, we are still working with them to get final, any final request for our next meeting, but as it stands right now, no new requests. And the budget for P D proposed is going to be three million eight hundred and forty dollars, eight hundred and forty thousand eight thirty-eight for P D. You have any discussions for P D or for court?
Sir.
Last item is wages. Go to the back of your book. You see the wage tab here? Wages. We have one request for wages. The wages are the same as what you all seen last meeting. We have one request for one additional headcount. That is for an administrative assistant. Moving forward, when we go to encode nine, we are going to automate the permitting process to, uh, with the new software that will allow the citizens or the clients to go in and track the progress of their permits. Inside new is called GOV, MyGOV, which is a module within, within encode. And so we want to, we want to have the permits person to spend less time at the window because trying to service the window and deal with the permits is creating confusion. So we're asking for an additional headcount for administrative assistant to work the front counter while we dedicate more dedicated time for permits. Oh. Public Works. Yeah, you're speaking of the Public Works Fleet Direct, Fleet Manager?
Yes.
Yes. There's a discussion on that, you have any discussion on that? None?
No.
Okay. Something you want to say for next meeting? Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion on wages?
Sir.
Okay. Alright, well, that's the update that we have. I apologize for the confusion, we'll make sure there's tabs in your books next time. So it'll be better. And, uh, I think will be our final meeting. We'll have next, last meeting that we had and this meeting, all the data combined, and we'll go to the one last, uh, budget book review. Okay?
Uh, one question, uh, for the PD, do we currently have a K-nine unit?
No.
Okay.
No K-nine unit. Any, any other discussion? Alright. Would like to join the meeting then?
Make a motion that we adjourn.